This is again, Miss Bean Dorrit, February twenty sixth, seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, this time I'm gonna ask, uh, where's our, uh, you got a junior and Drew Book, Drew, will you lead us in the place of places? I have to talk to the president.
That's right. Thank you guys for this day, for the opportunity to be here and to witness the county government's assessment of the fine waiver and please that we decided that they are excited to act out what we're doing. We're just asking for a third year today with a petition to do so across our first year.
Drew?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free民主 for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think you called her.
Yeah, nice.
Here.
Will you call her?
Here.
Tommy Page?
Here.
Tommy Stigall?
Here.
Todd Veach?
Here.
Eric Wood?
Here.
Matt Minnis?
Here.
Blake Stempel?
Here.
Terry Allen?
Here.
Robert King? Andy Anderson?
Here.
Doug Johnson? Nick Peterson? Joe Ross?
Here.
All right. For? All right, so, uh, first order business, number four, rating and approval of the last month's county commissioner meetings. Minutes. Were you these and, uh, have you ever viewed any questions or entertain a motion to approve?
What about the item number three, Bobby, did I add to that?
Yes, that was, uh, on item number three. Uh, the truck engine was supposed to be included on this with the sheriff's office and that's gonna be on business tonight, but that's already been approved by the school. Um, that will be amended. Thank you.
Was that amended?
What's that?
Was that amended?
Well, it was supposed to be added on there, it was on there just to...
Okay, because it wasn't in the motion.
With the... Okay. As you were, we'll bring it up to full commission. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Any other things?
Since I made a motion, wouldn't it be what's in the motion?
What's that?
It wasn't a motion that I made. You and I discussed it, I would add to it on that.
On number three?
On number three. You and I discussed it, like you said, I not understood what it was, but that's what it was. So you and I said, yeah, if they're gonna do that for years, I'll definitely get it.
So we can say, since you made the motion up for the truck being included, he is on record as making a motion approved by Blake Stempel. I will change that on minutes here. Gotcha. Oh. No to change anybody, uh, anything else. For motion to approve. That motion by Tommy, and second by Matt Mears. All in favor, say aye. And both, most carry. All right, this time, number five, in public comments. This time we're gonna entertain any comments from the public. Um, anything that's been, I think we passed the agendas out. On the, uh, since we got here? No, back here.
So we have some business.
This is gonna be in, in business, open business, in business, whatever you want to call it.
But you don't give us an opportunity to talk about the park later, is this my chance?
If you guys have any discussion, we'd like to hear from you right now.
I just wanna say, I'm, I'm...
If you don't mind, Trace, come up and say your name for the record.
My name is Tracy Chambers, I'm with my fellow community and I just wanna let everybody know that, um, majority of the community that I spoke with and reached out to are one hundred percent behind the park movement for the past ten years. Uh, there are concerns that have been brought up that I have talked with Mr. Creed about. Most of it being concerns of safety concerns, about could it bring drugs into the area, uh, things such as that, extra traffic and, uh, major public listen issues. And I just wanna address the board and say we've worked out those issues. Brand park, I'm ready for us, I made things that happened on Highway Road this weekend and I live on Railway Road. So, uh, we have talked with different people on the road, um, in the community that, uh, voice those concerns and I hope I've addressed most of those with them and they said if those issues were addressed and taken care of, that they have no issue with the club being there. However, since then, we did look at the map and blow the map up and our concern now is why is it black on four twelve? It's not out there in that pretty huge pasture, all right there on the backside of the residences, uh, Nick and Roger Wilson backside. It, it looked like on the map, it was up there towards the four, four lane highway. And, uh, so that address, I hope you were concerned of traffic and easy access, uh, on the road of accidents, uh, just as we're getting already, getting out, uh, dogfight shootings, things that they were already concerned about. By it being up there on the highway in public view of the four lane, that would have safety concerns with children, buses getting through and back and forth from the cars, you know, running around, getting closer to the four lane and particularly general, I, I'm a generation from that community. Uh, I live in the country, I don't wanna sit in the car and watch four lanes of traffic risk on my head. Uh, I would prefer it be closer to the school so that then we have the resource officer there handy, we have the cameras from the school, we have a little bit of, like, the sound barrier from the traffic, so we're not seeing that traffic and they're not seeing us with our babies out there playing. It would just be easier and safer to me, uh, if we moved it back off the road. Uh, one of the concerns was that Nancy Wilson driveway is blocked from two to three every day when scooters in progress, progress. Uh, that is gonna be, I mean, everybody in our community already knows that road is not passed through during that time period. So if I wouldn't try to take my granddaddy to the park between hours of two and three. So to us, that would be an issue, because even if you put the park right there by four, by four twelve, you're still not gonna access that drive through regardless, because those parents start parking their cars at two o'clock on Nancy Wilson and they park all the way up to four twelve. So that is not even a concern or issue to us, you know? Uh, but that, that is from the community, that is one of the concerns and, uh, as a spokesperson, uh, from the community, uh, I would like for us to definitely have a park, we're one hundred percent behind you. And, and we would like to, uh, throw in too that we have, uh, some of us have been to Parsons. And I don't know if you've been to Parsons, if you haven't been to Parsons Park out there about where the airport used to be, it is awesome. They have, not only did they have a state of the art playground and, uh, pavilions and all this other stuff, but they have a splash pad and all that stuff that gets current, what kids are doing today. I hope that the equipment and playground stuff that we get, uh, is the best updated. I hope that you, your job forces you put the playground up there for generations and generations. I hope, I hope you spend as much time thinking about this as they spend out, as they were spent on, uh, the football field. And I hope you spend as much money and time and effort and enthusiasm on this park. This park is for all generations, not for forty football players. It is for the babies to the grandparents. We have, if you use it correctly and utilize that land, you could have a running track, not in a circle around a small area by four twelve. You have a field out there with a, I mean, you can have a huge walking track, huge running track. You can utilize all of that land, you can have a golf park, you can have a prison park. Uh, I just hope you don't say small money about this park, because we're talking about the biggest community in Henderson County. And I, I'm from that community, but I'm not partial to that community, but I will say again, it's the best community to me in Henderson County. And I just hope that, uh, this isn't done, uh, I hope that you put forth your best effort to, for us. We need positive things out there and I'm not seeing anything positive from anybody and haven't seen anything positive for our community since, forever. I mean, I didn't have a park growing up there. So, uh, I just thank you for your time and thank you for considering this and if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. And like I said, I don't do big down doors and talk to other people about this, uh, it means a lot to me. And if you do have time, please go to Parsons and check out that park and we'll be really impressed with what we've done.
Thank you, Trace, appreciate it. Anybody else in the community about anything, all business, business? All right. Uh, going to, uh, number six, unfinished business. Uh, budget committee, uh, presented, uh, some offer, offer recommendations to, uh, full commission. We're getting to six point one, point one. Uh, we got EMA. And Commissioner Aaron Wood is the chairman of that committee. Commissioner, you have any, uh, comments before they come up?
No, the ones, as far as the generator and the radio request, as far as the budget committee, we recommend that we did approve it and, uh, send it to the full commission because they got approved. But we did recommend that part of the, like, generator, radio request. That's a generator part of Watson Center.
All right, we'll move forward to, uh, six point one, point one, EMA, Mr. Drew Cook. If the commission has any questions?
So, uh, just to kind of briefly, uh, address those topics that we have. The generator, uh, seems to replace, uh, June 7th, currently at the Watson Center. Uh, during December, uh, the tornadoes of twenty-one, uh, the generator went down. Uh, Chad, uh, Gil and the fire department, they'll be back up and running and it's, it's running currently. Uh, but the issue is, it is obsolete, parts are obsolete. So we had, uh, Paulings come out and assess it and look at it and look to see what would, uh, cost to improve it. And, uh, he gave us a quote, uh, the original quote was obviously a little cheaper than this, um, but that was also a two year old, a little over a year ago. So the price has gone with it. Uh, currently, the generator does not include the fire department, uh, it only operates the back part of the, the training center, the EMA office. But this generator would bring online the fire department, uh, to the generator. And, uh, again, in December, when we had major power outage, Murphy couldn't even work in their office. I knew everything they needed to do because they didn't have power up there. So this is, uh, this was that there, that, that whole complex. The, uh, radios, there's three radios, there's a VHF and a eight hundred hertz radio. And then there's a UHF motor turbo radio, uh, the motor turbo radio is the one that the sheriff's department, rescue squad, uh, city fires and police. There are several other coffers in there as well. Uh, there is the VHF which includes fire department, fire department, uh, EMS and then it's got the emergency channels in it as well. And then you have the eight hundred hertz radio which is the state radio, the state, uh, tag system, uh, that allows us to communicate through the states, to figure statewide, we need to contact outside resources or any other counties that we need to work in. Brian, glad to answer your question, my head.
Oh, I have a question on the generator.
Yes, sir.
Uh, if the, uh, commission purchases this generator, does that mean we're gonna be opening, uh, the laser fence for county operator versus, uh, going to a private sector?
We can, uh, that'd be specifically, I guess, that'd be up to you.
Okay.
You're starting to have to do it, so whatever you decide to do. Uh, the problem, the reason that we had gotten partnership with, uh, with the, uh, we had had someone there and all the staff that we would have there are outworking. And so, uh, instead of opening up, just let people in, uh, we got thousands of dollars of A D equipment and all kinds of things in there. Building, we're very young, completely, it's all metal, uh, years ago, so, uh, it's optional, but we'd have to come up with a plan for something to, to monitor that.
I won't start, I won't get playing in place, uh, with or without a generator.
We, we used to, uh, utilize the constables, uh, Max Ray, Pace was the line up. We, we had a question with that parent, of course, uh, when he passed away, uh, we didn't have anybody that was willing to step up and do it.
Deal. It just came to my mind a little time ago, we had that, uh, whatever. Well, you have a recommendation from the budget committee, any questions, uh, more from the commission? If not, is there a motion? Take it. Aaron, you would make a motion, copy, and say it. Hold on.
Jeff Jones?
No.
Will you call her?
No.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tommy Stigall?
Yes.
Uh, Veach?
Yes.
Eric Wood?
Yes.
Matt Minnis?
Yes.
Blake Stempel?
No.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Here. All right. Okay, how you guess, is that what you done? All right. Next item, I'm gonna think through, next item, business six point one, point two, sheriff's office. All right, Sheriff, uh, you presented yourself to the budget committee the other night. Um, I have a recommendation from the chair of the budget committee, and you want to find out the commission what this is.
If anybody has any questions, um, I remember, um, uh...
The generator, it's loose.
It is, yes, down one thirty-five, not, not...
That's correct.
Yeah. We did, as far as budget, we were very good.
Was it one thirty-five, what can you do?
No, that's, that's...
The generator itself.
And then the kitchen.
Full generator, Sheriff, uh, is this one also like the kitchen and the refrigerators and all that, we won't lose food or anything like that? Okay.
Hey, Brian, what kind of truck is that with more than one?
Uh, Dodge.
That piece of generator, really big, bro.
We've gone twelve years without it. Uh, there's been about two and a half years, I recall, off memory, where, you know, we had an issue, um, I believe both times last year. Uh, Jim Minor bailed us out the first time by sending us one of his refrigerator trucks. Second time, we went so lucky, we lost a lot of food. Food company's insurance, I think, covered us, but that was one of the recommendations, I think, uh, was, was to have the kitchen on the system.
About all these generators, valuable fire, fire, like, it down.
Is there ever a portable option that you have as a backup plan for the kitchen?
No, and, and of course, you're getting to the subject over my head, but basically the, the wiring, building, basically, yes. I, I'm down there, you can make money by knocking in. And that's, that's the goal, because it's not the generator itself, it's, it's installed, what's needed to supply the electricity to the kitchen.
I thought Matt paid us a lot, he, he gave us a lot of questions, uh. I don't know, Brian, but I agree. It's a lot of variables, it goes, really goes along, you know, like I say, it's true by you. Generator, really. It's maybe, probably not that much.
All right, you got a question or a sheriff on, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I didn't, no. So we're gonna wait for it, please.
Aaron Wood?
The generator does, and the truck engine.
Mike Mears, gotta say. Call her up.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tommy Stigall?
Yes.
Todd Veach?
Yes.
Eric Wood?
Yes.
Matt Minnis?
Yes.
Blake Stempel?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yes.
Jeff Jones?
Yes.
Will you call her?
Yes.
Sheriff, for you, are you gonna be here for a little while or are you fixing to leave?
Oh, well, I'm not there.
I've got a question, uh, uh, Ms. Chambers asked a valid question that she brought up, I was gonna like, see what happened, uh, about the park itself. Uh, do you recall being a garden park, do you recall any incidents over the past ten years where a lot of damage or y'all arrested anybody there?
We have arrested some people there, uh, I can't give you specific incidents. Uh, the biggest problem we had at the garden park was, uh, it was a meeting point where people come out of K County, just put themselves up. Uh, video cameras were installed, which is helpful, a lot, we've increased control there and, um, we have five, I mean, I have it right now, five. Got ready to go, so, once we get fully staffed, we should be able to police that, easily.
Exactly. Do you have any, uh, concerns about the waste of the community, is, is sort of location, is better than the other?
I'd also have to set it in the mouth, no exactly, approximately, you can school, good and high, like that, but I, I'll look at that.
Okay, this commission, I move forward with it, are we willing to sit down and just go over the map and have a good plan on that?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, moving to six point one, point three, rest of these, uh, the rest are not here, the guy, he is white, they have, have child.
Have you talked to anyone? Have you talked to anyone?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Have you talked to anyone?
I have, and, uh, we've got a recommendation, uh, to purchase the one that was presented for the, uh, budget committee, uh, senior practice. Um, it's just the lesser of the two. And not going with main screen, it's about the purchase outright, it's a one-time purchase.
I'm making a motion for a break.
I'll say.
Motion, Joe Ross, second area, would you call her up?
Todd Veach?
Yes.
Eric Wood?
Yes.
Matt Minnis?
Yes.
Blake Stempel?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yes.
Jeff Jones?
Yes.
Will you call her?
Yes.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tommy Stigall?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Sheriff, you got something more to talk about real quick?
Uh, you made a mention, I may put this on, on the, uh, on all bid under, well, it should go on the good business, but, uh, I know you got somewhere to be. Uh, one of our, uh, I have a question, to get back on our district mayor's reboard and, uh, we just request approval for the commission, for the commission, put her back on that board.
Have motion?
I don't want to.
All right, here, Todd, Tom.
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You both? Tell, tell him this one, I get to work.
We'll do it.
All right, uh, six point one, uh, point four, rescue squad. All right, rescue squad, this is going back to front of the, uh, budget committee, they are gonna present it to you guys. I know, uh, Clint's far, about like all of us, uh, places are coming in September, he's gonna have a board meeting. And I, I hope the commission, uh, has a solution tonight. Uh, Clint, thank you for being patient, appreciate the work you guys did, uh, for you.
Um, so again, we're asking for nine nine thousand, one thirty, for me to replace this with, yes, that four fifty. Uh, and also purchase one new set of experimentation tools, uh, of the battery operating tools, uh, no hoses or anything attached to them. Uh, this, that's what the new technology's going to, to the battery operating tools. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you all have for us.
I know I spoke to you seven times about fundraising, I wondered if you have any initiative by way of fundraising? Have you spoken to any businesses, have you raised any money?
As a matter of fact, we're fixing to send out letters to the senior, uh, that should be coming next month.
And do you have a director that you can meet tonight?
I don't have a director, Phil Peterson is giving all of the stuff.
Right, right.
We give you additional five thousand dollars, what, what are you gonna do with that now?
That additional five thousand, well, the first three years have been used to pay off the thirty-five thousand dollar loan we took out the first year.
On the truck that you...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How much do you owe with that?
Uh, well, it takes, uh, eight thousand dollars in September. So we should owe somewhere in the, like, three, four million dollars in there.
And it's up and running?
Yeah, it's, it's a new, new thing. That, that, the new one, which we had one, we took that, that's what we're replacing.
I'm gonna make a motion and give them the nine nine thousand. I'll say, I'm talking, get down, go, consider, up and down.
A motion from, uh, Todd, second, American, call her up, any, any discussion, call her up.
Matt Minnis?
I'm gonna have to say, it affects the history of the program, we work with the rest of the members, we're local representative, we advise.
Blake Stempel?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yeah.
Jeff Jones?
No.
Will you call her?
Yes.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tommy Stigall?
No.
Todd Veach?
Yes.
Eric Wood?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. About that. Most carry. All right. Number seven, new business, this time, uh, retired nine one one board member, I mean, uh, nine one one director, she's here tonight, but, uh, back front of you guys, a, uh, discuss approval, maybe nine one, nine one one board member appointment. Uh, the nine one one committee, uh, submitted you guys a letter requesting, um, that you guys make an appointment of, uh, Ms. Pam Todd to their legislative committee, she is now retired from the county.
I made a motion for one, Ms. Todd is, I'll say, nine one one board.
Got a motion from Blake, second, from, uh, Mr. Aaron Wood, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? All right. Uh, the second item on the agenda, new business, is, uh, reading the minutes into the, of the updated time off policy, including time off requests, all they scheduled on vacation for nine one one. Again, it's just reading this into the minutes. All right, seven point three, discuss approval, county's highway, uh, roadways still need to change. Uh, Mr. Vineyard, I think these year, um, had, we get calls daily, uh, about changing the county roadways from fifty-five to forty on the county backroads. Uh, instead of us doing random spots around the county in order of additional signage and costs, uh, talked with, uh, Mr. Vineyard and he made the recommendation and I also agree with it, that we just changed all county backroads to forty mile an hour, not state highways and backroads.
I think the highway two hundred is forty mile an hour way to, to the county.
That's a state highway. Yeah.
Forty mile an hour, all the way.
Yeah, I think they would cut down some of our issues.
One or four. Save a lot of money on that.
I'll vote some money on that. I'll entertain a motion for it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, make a motion.
I'll say.
Terry Allen, say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any both? Thank you. Yes. All right, seven point four. Yes.
God, I hate to do this, but, in my mind, we're on, uh, rescue squad, we have eight ayes.
Yes.
I thought I only counted seven, and then I just wanted to clarify, so it didn't become an issue down the road.
I got eight, how many did you get, Todd? I got two no's and a seven.
Two no's and a seven.
Mm-hmm.
Three aces, okay, that's fine, I just wanted to clarify.
A.
Yep, thank you. Our seven point four, this is approved by TBA, the best prep grant, uh, see license for questions, utilize interest bank eligibility for the two thousand twenty-three TBA investment prep grant application for the industrial park. The county will be the grant applicant and purchase property having city license to repair all its expenditures, uh, there is a financial impact, thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars is awarded, and that will be paid over by the city license. For the financial of the industrial park. All right, I make a, my recommendation is that we, uh, we pass this, any more questions?
This would be no expense on the county.
No, sir.
Who would the property be owned by?
Uh, less than industrial board. Joe Ross made a motion.
Say.
Second by, what you saying? Call the road.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Joe Ross? Jeff Dimes?
Yes.
William Carter?
Yes.
Tom Page?
Yes.
Tom and Stig out?
Yes.
Tom and Stig?
Yes.
Eric Wood?
Yes.
Max Minus?
Yes.
Jeff Stempson?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven point five, discuss approved resolution of local park recreation grant program, uh, this is two thousand twenty-three application year for the local park recreation, uh, grant, also known as the FBRF. Um, application's due next week, uh, we've submitted some proposals, some rough estimates, again, this is stuff we've got to turn into the state of Tennessee, uh, what many people don't realize is, is that when we do these proposals, we have to go off of T doc specs and guidelines, um, we have to go off their pricing, that way we know everybody's submitting fair estimates, we don't have people coming in overviving or underviving, they have a standard, standardized set of, uh, plans and prices that they go by, so, on this initial estimate, this is what the state goes in, make sure everybody's on the same playing field, and we're not being undermined or making a bad guess. So, again, uh, once it approves, this goes through, and we get selected for this new park playground, uh, it'll be much more community involvement, like Ms. Chambers, if you guys heard from her, speaking on behalf of that community, uh, being that, this will be the second one approved that I have had part of, the first one, we had on community meetings, we've had those, and it's part of our master plan, we do surveys, we show several examples of quitting, and get the needs of the community, so I appreciate Ms. Chambers and her, uh, and her coming forward on behalf of that community, uh, this is also a two-year project, it won't affect this year's budget, uh, so we're looking at, uh, two budget years from now, kind of gets done, uh, same thing to say this, uh, I have reached out, and I've talked to a couple of community partners, uh, who have, um, not necessarily committed, depending on what this board does, uh, they're, they're looking at providing some of our max for us at no cost to the county, through, uh, private funds for community related events. So, I'm anxious to see you partner with our community, I've probably got more phone calls about this than I have since, uh, anything, since I've been here, even the lawsuit, um, and in a positive way, people who have concerns, they have legitimate concerns about kids, not about what things, what the process is, what the procedures are for local government, for how they did their action, but about the kids, and that's where, if I hear a concern, it's probably most important. So, based on this, our max could be, um, just over three hundred thousand dollars, to put a new playground, walking trail, provision, parking area, picnic tables, uh, for the community out west. Um, pretty encouraged by this, I also grew up in Westover, and, uh, on land, pretty close to there, it is, I put off the city home, um, I'm pretty encouraged about, uh, the way our county goes, so, any other questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
That I've had to communicate or call me on, the, the bids that have been done, is the price, is local people going to be adopting, you know, stuff like, say, the concrete work, the, the building work?
Yeah, so the way our purchasing policy goes, we have to get everything out, so it will be put on the state website, our website, we run it in the local newspaper, so they will have the same opportunity, uh, for anybody else.
Yeah, I, I like things, some, some, sorry about that, and some of the prices that are shown.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's some national prices you're talking about.
Well, like I said, they do, they, they have to go off the T doc prices, prices.
That one, that one, we have to pay them.
No, it does not, but what that, what that does is, is it puts everybody in a weather playing field, unless they're moving the grounds. Good question.
So, will this right here be the site location for?
Uh, it can be, we guess.
Well, she was talking about the possible changes could be made if needed.
If needed, yes.
If I could.
Andy had a question here.
If we were, if we were to notice that this wouldn't be the latest application, it would come right off.
Probably two years. And, you know, like, how do things go up? And it's a pretty good process, so I got a motion by, I'm second by, Tommy, the top. Tommy, see, uh, yeah, any discussion, we open.
As a matter of fact, you know what Tracy was hitting on there, uh, there is a wood line there that will be covering some of that traffic, those and stuff.
Yeah, we're going to leave the, uh, the vegetation, off the growth of trees, though, where you won't be able to see directly, and they're, if they don't select that side. Another thing I've talked to the commission, uh, if you've been at Gaby Anderson, um, and you see the, uh, the blue lights, camera system, um, I worked on getting that there, you know, whilst up the parks, and that feed goes directly to the police station, and, um, depending on how much more we have, if we got any left at the end of the project, I would like to, uh, commission consider adding that to it also. That, that low, it's a low cost, it's not, it's mostly helping the maintenance. Got a motion and second. Call the road.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yes.
Jeff Dimes?
Yes.
William Carter?
Yes.
Tom Page?
Yes.
Tom and Stig out?
Yes.
Todd Mitchell?
Yes.
Eric Wood?
Yes.
Max.
Max Minus?
Yes.
Blake Stempson?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Seven point six, discuss approved solid waste fund request, uh, which we're confident you can come up with, maybe, uh, the other night, uh, solid waste committee met, had Junior Carter, the chair of that committee, um, they talked in, actually several meetings now, about purchasing new, um, trailers for our cardboard curbs, to put some more places out, um, this committee made a recommendation, presented for the full commission, uh, this budget amendment does not come out of a one-on-one fund, this comes out of the solid waste fund, does not come out of general fund budget, uh, the solid waste fund has, they have their own budget. Uh, talked with, uh, Ms. Megan, Megan confirmed, uh, they have enough allocation in the undecided, make this purchase.
Yes, I do.
All right, um, again, these trailers will be used to, uh, we'd like to bring some of the cardboard trailers in for repair.
Yeah, we've got time to need repair, and we've got some places that are access to repair, and we did, we got that, this is giving a chance to pick some of the ones we've got, but.
And they did go through several different vendors, and, uh, as far as getting quotes, uh, from, from the area, and this is the one that the, uh, solid waste committee picked, it was the, uh, lowest and responsibly, responsible quote.
I'm gonna make a proposal about, about choosing some of this trailer.
Got a motion from Jonas and, uh, second pair out, any more discussion? Call the road.
Joe Ross?
Yes.
Jeff Dimes?
Yes.
William Carter?
Yes.
Tom Page?
Yes.
Tom and Stig out?
Yes.
Todd Mitchell?
Yes.
Eric Wood?
Yes.
Max Minus? Yes, uh, Blake Stempson?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
I want, thank you, I want to pass the, uh, budget amendment around for, uh, the budget committee to sign. Ask this, uh, budget, budget committee, it comes about to please sign that. Seven point seven, proceed to email from the state, uh, over the years, we have opted out of the residential codes, brook for renewal again, uh, whether we want to opt out, or opt in, or hire our own residential inspector. Um, obviously, if we opt out, uh, we have in the past, we have, uh, um, no residential inspector as far as we build houses, and I think it's up to thirty square feet, if you opt in, the state can come in and do it at their rate, they're responsible for it. Um, this, what are the, up for discussion about what you guys want to do on that?
We've always opted out of this, that actually.
It's only, it looks like you've got, you've always opted out, yes.
Probably here.
He did.
I'll say.
Jim, that's there, because we always opt out.
I'm gonna say opt out.
All right, there a motion?
I'll make a motion, opt out.
Joe Ross, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any both? I submit this fact worth the mark of him. Uh, seven point eight, at the time, uh, for the new opioid settlement, I believe our attorney guy knows today that they're going to send their own form out to the state, is that correct?
The attorney general's office, uh, notified C pass today to inform me that there's going to be some form resolutions, that they're going to be sending out in the county municipalities, and I'll be recommending an option of that when I receive it, and we present that, the deadline is like mid-April, and so we've got the march meeting to go over that.
We did receive, uh, some payment notification.
We received it today, we actually received payment today.
Okay, did you recall the thing?
Hundred twenty-two thousand.
Hundred twenty-two?
Plus some time.
What does that give us, the overall?
It's two different funds, there was the initial fund, and this is the.
Opioid payment.
This is the payment.
This all the name, we're already allowed to use for certain, got a certain category, correct?
We'll have to discuss.
Yes. All right, seven point nine, discuss, uh, election commission building, uh, impact, as you'll see, this is under new business, the, uh, election commission presented a deal, promote HFR design, uh, their consulting firm for a new building, uh, they also discussed leasing and bidding for a new building, uh, Aaron, we made a motion to, uh, bring the idea for the election commission building to full commissioners, and second by, Mr. Anderson, um, if we go with, uh, initially with Wold, uh, they have a, uh, professional services agreement that we would sign, and they've got the agreement, while that includes, um, was also talked about, if we was entertain the idea of doing a lease option, um, had an investor approach the county about, uh, building a new building, and the, whatever the cost was, uh, ten percent of that would be the annual lease payment, for instance, if it's a six hundred thousand dollars, it'll be a sixty thousand dollar yearly lease payment, and so forth, uh, that's with the, the maintenance included. Only thing I recommend the commission to do is always think about, when we build new buildings, make sure we got maintenance money to take care of.
Yeah, because, if y'all really want to want to talk to new building, they.
Probably.
They want one point two million dollars.
How much was the big building?
I know, I said, that's one of the stuff, and I'm not, I'm not, one point two million dollars.
No, that was the example. Uh, we made what exactly, one idea, uh, before, uh, after the last day, we got that note down, considerable, uh, when this process started, it, it started back in June, uh, April, May, even last year, I would question, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, and I don't know what's left, but, you know, is there any way that we can get an RFP done, to try to figure out how about this building's going to cost?
Yeah, we can do, an RFP is a request or proposal, we can, we can do an RFP, this is what the county commission wants to do.
Twenty twenty-four, I haven't yet.
Have you got, have you guys got an actual footprint, I know you and I talked, as far as, how many square feet that you got it down to?
Uh, we, we haven't been to this thing, we hadn't heard nothing, but we had made everything that was in that, well, we need storage more than anything. So, you know, if we could do an RFP for that, what is going to cost? That, that's one thing.
I figured I would have a little way for it.
Whether, I should have four hundred ninety-nine thousand anyway, in the off.
So, are you telling me that you didn't come before the budget committee, want to point to me about that one, that building that they drew out?
Yeah.
RFP.
If you'll look, that's, that's.
I did look.
It's just, just down at the top of the table.
It's a building that's presented as five thousand RFP, one point two million dollars.
That, well, that was our place.
I know, but it's presented as, that's blowing mine.
Well, I'm trying to blow mine, but, you know, we need storage, and, and.
Well, we need start point, but, uh, you know, we need to be reasonable.
Absolutely.
I will, we're not shitting it off, but I, we got some work that they're going on.
You guys want to do an RFP, or what's the will of the body, I mean, as far as, uh, the election is coming up, there's, you guys are, uh, got a place now, actually, matter of fact, I have to say, your, your building looks pretty good, considering where you guys come from, I'm, I'm pretty.
We're, we're up now.
Yeah.
We're all over that, that ain't the boat.
Uh, speaking of that, let me ask you a question, and, uh, I haven't had a chance to talk to you about it, I'm going to put you on the spot, I don't care, I talked to, uh, the, uh, the gentleman you guys had the lease with now, and he, he had mentioned about building the larger parking lot area, putting potential stores built for you guys, and access to the main street, building a road out back, if he was able to do that, would that be something we could, uh, get you guys through for a little while? Without building a building, or is that something, um, I haven't been in this, for the day-to-day operations, though.
I don't know how the track is, well, you, I mean, you put this courthouse in that, that's a lot of fire.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what they do for living dirtwork, but.
What you say, access to the main street?
Yeah, they were, they own the property all the way over in North Main.
Yeah, that would hit a lot.
And. Having access over there, and, uh, getting the storage built out back, and even adding onto that building they mentioned, um, but that's, you know, that's using their, using their stuff, uh, it might be a viable option, until we get, we can do an RFP, you can kind of nail down, this is what we will do in the future.
Uh, Mr. Aaron, we didn't ask for one point four RFP.
I didn't say that, I said, the other, that was proposed to us, from those people drawing, I remember, it's got the FEMA shelter in it, the conference room, all of the. That wasn't a start point to me to say one one point two million dollars.
No, that wasn't.
That shouldn't even been talked to us about, to be honest with you, it should have said, you know, we'll start working on it, that was the price that we was told, that these people, that we're talking about here, I'm not arguing with you, I'm not here to argue, I, I just, uh, you know, when you stick me with one point two million dollars for a election bid. I, I just, uh, you know, when you stick maybe with one point two million dollars for a election bid, it puts a name and connotation right there. We will work you and I've always worked with you. But we wanna do it right and say we, we can't go into the B. That's not the. More chat.
All right, I asked, sure. Does, um, does the election commission have, uh, would make a difference for practical purposes? Uh, whether we had lease on the building or ten years or building, you would, I mean, but that really. Would you have preference on where you have?
There wasn't much, nothing at all. But, we got us talking for, we didn't know it now. Chester County, that's what they gave them, we didn't ask for that.
No, Chester County, yeah.
But, we didn't ask for that, we lost you, we did not, we did not, if you'll look.
I didn't say you asked me for it, I said what was presented to us from those people, their drawing. And their specification was one point two million dollars. I didn't say that, that, Robinson, I gotta have this building.
I did not.
Just sort of, you know, just sort of blow your mind, you know, we're gonna do that. I worried about.
We gotta get something else.
So can I? So can we do an RFP without needing to do anything, like actual expense?
Yeah, it just request or proposal. The only, the only thing we may have, uh, based on architect fees according to. When drawn it out, the state can weigh exactly what we want.
Can we get an RFP without architect fees that are up?
Probably not exactly. Cause it is, it'd have to be a lot of details inside the uh, the drawing of that. You gotta get down to the electrical plumbing and water irrigation.
We did meet with the guy that drew, drew those planes, we gotta kind of hide. We don't think so, I'm. I'm.
I told Robinson that, why, Robinson, you understood that?
Oh, no, I understood.
Well, we're, we're about shaking for a few months ago.
Absolutely, legal degree now.
We're, we're very shaky, we got time to stay, but nothing. Graciously, right, but we gotta figure out if we build a new building, please one, or just what we're gonna do, so. I think we need to do the.
Okay. Man, where would we pull the allocations of the funds out to do that? As far as the RFP and what the engineer firm to draw?
What's that on the box?
There's a question over there. Say, say eight thousand.
Eight?
Yeah.
No, same if we're all pumping up. I don't know.
It's not, it's not to the state probably there.
I mean, at one time, we was understanding that, you know, we had property out behind Jackson State, we was gonna possibly looking into doing something with the election commission with the help of.
Yes.
Understanding at one time, but.
It was.
I think this is one where we need to be a little bit patient with what we're doing.
We got the brown shoe, Dave, we, we got the brown shoe, like.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, you ain't gonna have to build a building for four years.
Trade, uh, trade land and school boards, that'll lock, dude. And that doesn't cut.
Right.
Whoever did that, I guess, I think I bought it from that. Put the walls.
While I'm hearing the uh, record actually seen, uh. I'll bring it back to you guys, what proposal is for the drawings and then we'll do the RFP, uh, if, when, when's that approved, okay? Everybody do that?
In this drawing, in this drawing, will it be, what do you want?
Oh, I was, was, was what, the election commission? Absolutely, I don't know anything about elections, except where to turn my stuff in there. So I would lean heavily on being.
So you're looking, you're looking to give the options of what RFP costs?
I'm looking, first thing I gotta do is see what's gonna cost us to do the drawings. Okay, do your own range back for you guys. RFP doesn't cause anything, the drawings will cost. All right. Uh, this has another item under new business, uh, actually had taken off. Uh, about the TIF districts, I've got a, some gentleman gonna present something to you real quick. We're not gonna make any action tonight, don't, don't get spun out. No action, they're gonna, they're gonna give you a package to study, it will be on the next month's agenda. Uh, they got some documents that gonna pass out and uh, I'd like to introduce you to us.
Good day.
If you wanna pass it, they pass this right.
I'm Sam Crank, uh, my partners Anthony Mountain and Adam Nod singer. And uh, we, a couple of years ago, realized, all of us are originally from Houston County and have. Seen the lack of new housing development, uh, in our community. And uh, to help alleviate, uh, the burden that that puts on the county by, uh, not being able to attract an industry and uh, uh. Providing housing for, uh, its citizens. Uh, we did some research, we're able to find that the state of Tennessee changed laws during two thousand nineteen. To allow TIFs, which were usually only allowed for commercial, uh, development projects, to be used for residential, uh, development, uh, issue. So the sewage, the building of the, breaking of the lots to the roadway, curves, guys, that we don't know about. Um, so during this process, we've, uh, had an economic impact study going that's in that packet. Um, I'm not gonna get into a lot of, uh, in there about this tonight. What we wanted to do is, uh, I'm sure a lot of you may have heard about our project, we wanted to come forward and introduce ourselves, uh. Offer our contact information, uh, provide you a little bit of detail about the revenues and how the next stream, uh, would work. In the manner of how a TIF works, the allocations that would be used by the growth in property taxes, uh, from this new development. Um, currently, when we purchased this property, it was a, uh, just in the county, uh, I brought my twenty twenty-two, uh, tax statement. And last year, we paid a hundred and seventy-nine dollars in property taxes on this development. Uh, around this side, it's, it's currently agriculture land, uh, it's off of Timberlake, Timberlake Waldorf Shore Road. Um, we are looking to put in a seventy-two home development there. Uh, we had this, when we purchased property, we had it annexed into the city. Uh, so to, uh, help with the having the city's, uh, department to be able to service it. Uh, and also generate city taxes for the community and, uh, um, provide housing, a big housing deck for the city as well. Uh, the tract of land is extremely close to the north industrial park, it actually butts up to the old railroad bed. It connects where the power lines run down and everything like that. Um, through the economic impact study, uh, we have younger and associate students for us. Uh, the realization, the tax realization on this property will go from a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, uh, per year. To, if you look at page six, uh, again, it says page six over, this is the, uh, estimated tax schedule for Houston County. Uh, it will, once it's fully built out and all the homes are online, estimated full tax value will go from a hundred and seventy-nine dollars a year to eighty-four thousand dollars a year. So, the way a TIF works, it uses the projected tax income, uh, from the development side. To pay for, uh, the development costs incurred by developers coming into a, uh, to do a new site. Uh, it's not used on actual houses itself, this is just used for the infrastructure of the development. Uh, a lot of missing sections can be that all these developers are coming in, getting the tax money to build houses, no. We're using this money to build the roads, build the sewage, uh, build the curb and others, install the, uh, electrical services and, and everything on that. Uh, water, um, so that's how this works. This is a lot of information that's thrown in front of you and I know we were just adding, uh, back on to it. But, what we're gonna do over the next, uh, couple of weeks, coming up to the, uh, next meeting in March when we're on the agenda. Is we will be putting out the resolution that we have with the IDB, uh, the Lexon Industrial Board, we're already approved with them. Uh, we've been approved by the state comptroller to do a third year TIF, um. Resolution, anyway, we've, we've been approved by those resolutions. What we're gonna be coming to, uh, the committee to, uh, pass is for Houston County to allow us, uh, the opportunity to use. The projected tax taxes of this development, uh, to help us do the development. It will be spread out over a thirty-year time period. Uh, what will happen is ninety percent of the taxes collected during that time will go to the health service or pay off our estimated, our development costs. While ten percent will still be held by the county. Uh, if you look at page six again, um, the county's not gonna lose any tax money during this time. Uh, you'll actually see a gain, uh, every year and the more houses that we get online until we get the maximum number online. Uh, we'll get all the way up to, you'll still be retrieving seven thousand dollars a year. Uh, going from a hundred and seventy-nine dollars a year to seven thousand dollars a year. I know this is, can be kind of confusing, that's why we put our contact information, uh, on the front page of this. We are happy to answer questions, um, if you have questions about it, Robbie has our contact information. But we're gonna develop, uh, deliver a full proposal, uh, we'll, we'll share the resolutions that are already in place in the city. And, uh, we just look forward to working with you and, uh, hopefully you're gonna be able to help grow some housing in this community.
Any questions? All right, I'll, I'll kind of go ahead, Terry.
Uh, so how, when, when was this, I don't know.
Uh, we, we had, yeah, it was last year, uh, in two thousand.
That was the original plan, the ninety-ten, or was y'all planning on eighty-five fifteen, I, I thought you told me eighty-five fifteen?
But, we can, the eighty-five, the ninety-ten is what, uh, the other associate did. We actually have a twenty-year, um, uh, schedule that shows it at eighty-five fifteen. We can present that, uh, we can go back to the other associate and break it out a couple of different ways. Um, the only one that I had available that shows thirty-year breakdown was the ninety-ten. So, um, the IDB, uh, did, did allow us to work the ninety-ten on, on it, but that is, uh, if I'm not. Yes, it's, uh, they did a purchase from the ninety-ten for the IDB. That was eighty-five, IDB, eighty-five, okay, that, the eighty-five, it was eighty-five fifteen. So, but we'll, we'll present that, I will bring, there will be different options that we can look at. Uh, you know, we wanna be as transparent as possible, uh, and we really want to, to be able to, uh, bring this new subdivision to the.
And I know we're gonna have a lot of time to discuss this kind of stuff, I'm, I'm just curious about something. So y'all, y'all bought the land, you're gonna build it, you're gonna build roads, uh, curbs, water lines and all that stuff at y'all's expense? But now, when you build this house, you're gonna turn around and add the, the price of all that back in too, is that it?
We, our, our partnership is wanting to be selling the lots to the developer, uh, the developer will be doing whatever to that. So our, our lot cost will have a price and that's where, uh, we would.
So when you, when you do your lots, you, you, y'all would develop lots, right?
Yes.
Y'all are gonna clean up the lot. So you're gonna take, and I don't know what y'all wait for this land, I'm sure it won't last. And, and I'm not trying to be smart back, but you're, you're gonna take this lot that's probably a two to three thousand dollar lot, you're gonna sell it for twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, right?
That's around there, yes.
So basically, y'all wanna kind of recoup some of your price to develop that, put the roads in and the, the curves.
Well, not, not as the, the partnership, I mean, we'll, if, if anything, we'll, we'll break even on that, uh, to be able to do, I mean, that's not a feasible business.
Yeah, the, the project, all the infrastructure is about two million dollars, so if you take two million divided by seventy-two, that's around thirty thousand dollars a lot. So what we have to do is, um, we have to go to the bank and borrow that two million dollars or whatever. Which our TIFs not gonna cover all of it, so, um, without getting into a whole lot of it, this is, it's, it's showing one point six, but actually, you know, we, we'll probably only get one point two for showing. So there's eight hundred that we're gonna be out of pocket, at a minimum. And, uh. The IDB and the bank have a loan agreement together that we're on the hook for. So we're like securing this loan and these taxes will be used to pay off that one point eight. So without the TIF, these lots are gonna be sixty thousand dollars, which is what, what they are in other places, so. It brings the cost of the house, it brings the cost of the house down, it makes the project doable versus not doable.
And the, the houses that, that's planned to be, y'all not building that, y'all are just doing the development?
I'm, I'm building houses.
What, what kind of money, price-wise, houses are we talking here?
Um.
These shows are here.
Yeah. Yeah, the estimate price on that is two hundred fifty-eight thousand.
Okay.
And that's today, so.
So you're building a house in seven thousand?
Yes. Our, our partnership is separate from this, is, is, is gonna be building and developing houses. Uh, our partnership again is doing the development of, uh, so the, separate from, from.
So, so what is the city's plan? Where's my plan at, baby?
There's not any money, there's not.
No, you're not even seeing.
There's not any money changing hands here.
Compensating, it's always the, the TIF.
Eighty-five, eighty-five percent of the, uh, of the TIF.
You're giving that money to the city?
Well, we, we need it from, from the city. The next page is the city.
But if you look at it.
It's, uh, so it's the same, it's the same tax way, uh, it's the same way, uh, as, um, the county, it's just about half as much, right, to the tax rate, county price.
So you're using, uh, big government C in here, no?
Correct.
The only one making physical, uh, development project is that of Governor Bob's combo.
One thing I ask for considered, anything that we do, anything they do inside the city, county don't have any financial services. Uh, Steve, the highway department, they don't pay the city streets, uh, they pick their own trash up. Uh, we don't have any financial services at all, so. That would fall handling, you know, the fire department, that would fall straight over the city's shoulders. So they're gonna have any bigger cost on this board, they would make that their services.
What, what is going on down, is it down the same way?
No. No.
This was, this was about two years ago.
So what happened was, so we're a distressed county.
Tier, and we're considered a tier four county.
So we're, tier four is as low as you can go with this, the distress, we're at risk. So, the state offered this tax incentive to get the community to bring them up, to get some more, uh, sales tax revenue, to bring it to you. Cause like, communities can't afford to do it themselves. So this is a, that's, like Jason Moonbar, if you look on, uh, on your page there, uh, he's the comptroller, they reviewed these things. They investigated through the county citizens and they're also through, uh, through that organization of citizens in it. Because we're, we're at risk county for me. Uh, and the next census we're scheduled for going down in our, in our population.
Here's a large diagram of the, uh, subdivision. If it's all, did that lobby from all of the guests or?
All right, any other questions, uh, for this group? I have the contact information.
Uh, on that first, we, the first page, you got our email, our cell phones, uh, reach out to us anytime. Uh, we will get all the information, uh, for our proposals, I'll send it out at the end of time. And we're gonna have time to, uh, look over for some of, uh, the next.
And just a reminder, this is the, uh, flash that we have at the election hospital a few weeks ago with, uh, Tom Grant came down and presented this, gave the overview. And, uh, I think a lot of you got that slide that guy you came out and say, uh, no, I'll send it back out, uh, that we prepared. And, uh, Mr. Tom Grant, if you wanna call, talk to him, ask questions, see the group to answer it back also. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Last over business, that's for key deliveries. Uh, I'll say this, presume the list of deliveries for approval, your second one?
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion. All right.
I like.
When you came through the road.
I only do that for the seats.
All right. Second? Did anybody second this? I'll say, all in first, say out, you're supposed. And to the people, to the people. And maybe we go. All in first, say out, you're supposed. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on. Call back to order in a second. In a second. I've gotta play something else that, uh, I did a problem. I came by last evening. And I, I want everybody to understand this. I really want everybody to understand and hear me clearly. Uh, I love our communities and I really appreciate this convention. But I will not tolerate people talking to my commissioners and threatening them or harassing them. Okay? If that happens, you're in the rich criminal charge that will be filed in next perfect length of courthouse while I open the drop records and I will personally follow my set. I appreciate you guys and I look forward to working for the county. I'll move on to the next one. Okay.